In addition of our Washington County Board of Commissioners work session, I believe we have on the phone both Commissioner Pam Treese and Commissioner Roy Rogers.
Correct. Hello?
Correct, yep.
Wonderful. And here in the room, we have Commissioner Willie, Commissioner Scoughton, and myself, Chair Harrington, along with our leadership team and great staff in the audience. I don't see any faces of members of the public, at least here in the room. If they're on the telephone, welcome to our community members. So, the first item on our afternoon agenda is a COVID-19 update. I'd like to welcome Marnie Kyle up to the table to give us yet again another fabulous update on everything that's been happening, or at least a rock-solid subset.
Afternoon, Chair Harrington and Board. Yes, it's my first time. My sake. Okay, so in my update today, I've had a lot of questions from you all on email over the last couple of days and this morning, so I'm going to try to touch on those questions. I just want to give you a heads-up that for tonight, I have prepared a PowerPoint presentation because I think some of this information needs some visual backdrop, like some charts when we talk about trends. So, I'm going to talk about just a quick update on the situation. I am going to hit on the OHA trend projections, the update on the Emergency Operations Center. I do want to talk about, we have a new branch in our EOC that's really paying attention to equity and applying a trauma-informed lens, and then the stay safe, stay home, stay safe. So, for the situation update, in Washington County, as of this morning at 8:00, we had 186 positive tests. 1,873 people have been tested in Washington County. And tonight, you'll see an asterisk on that number, and the reason is because we don't know if we're capturing all of the private testing that's happening. Sometimes they're a little bit slow in getting those numbers into the system. So, that's the tests that we know about, and we haven't had any new deaths in Washington County, and so that's a good thing. We sit at 3:00. In the state of Oregon, there's 606 positive tests, and 12,883 people have been tested statewide. And again, that does include some private testing, but we're not sure that it includes all of the private testing at this point. And statewide, there's been a total of 140 people hospitalized, and I'm working on that number for Washington County, so I'll have that for you tonight. So, with that, I'm going to move into the OHA predictions. And so, what the epidemiologists did is they looked at data that, they looked at other countries, they looked in Asia, they looked in Europe, and then they looked at our numbers, they looked at even things like Facebook posts. So, they really mined big data sets, and they came up with these predictions. And what they did is they broke it into three different possible scenarios. So, one scenario is aggressive mitigation. If we do, if we really follow the governor's order, at least 90% of people follow the governor's orders, and they stay home, they social distance, they don't go out at all if they're sick. Then their prediction is that by May 8th, we would see a cumulative case of 1,000. So, that's the best-case scenario. By May 8th, all of these predictions were up to May 8th. And after May 8th, then we would see a decline on the other side of the curve. So, with moderate mitigation strategy, so if we started going backwards, maybe we opened some businesses back up, or if people don't follow the aggressive mitigation strategies, their prediction is that we would see a cumulative case rate of 6,100. Quite a big difference. And with return to normal, so if we let schools open, if we cease start social distancing messages, then we're looking at a range of about 15,000 cumulative cases. And the 6,100 or the 15,000 would overwhelm our health system. We would not have enough hospital beds, ICU beds, or ventilators. So, the most important message really is that we have to be vigilant, and we absolutely have to do our very best to maintain the higher mitigation strategies of social distancing, staying home, especially if you're sick, having any symptoms, you need to stay home. So, tonight, I will show you a graph of the curve and what that looks like, so that you can kind of see it, if you like graphs better than words. You'll have both the words and the graph.
I think you might have to move your mic closer to you. Thank you.
Okay. So, then what I wanted to just give you, an update on the EOC. And the EOC has had up to 75 people a day. They're currently operating Monday through Friday, mostly about 10-hour days, some people 12-hour days, some people longer. And they're operating virtually over the weekend, so a lot of people are still working over the weekend, but they're not coming into the center with the exception of the public health staff. They are 12 to 15 people that are working seven days a week, very long hours. So, the emergency, the Operations Center has all of the main executive-level functions. So, they have a finance section, they have an operations section, incident commander, public information section. But I'm really going to hone in more on the emergency operation, the operations section of the EOC, of the emergency operation. So, the goals of the EOC are really to support and enforcement, support and provide enforcement for the stay-at-home order to mitigate the spread of disease. They're working to provide coordination and resources, and that coordination and resource management is working with other EOCs, cities, special districts, the regional EOCs, the Multnomah County and Clackamas County EOCs, state EOCs. So, it's a lot of coordination. Hospitals all have different incidents commands, as well as the centralized commands. So, we're really working with all of them, hundreds of businesses, and all of our nonprofits. So, the coordination of resources is huge. One of the resources that we're managing right now is personal protective equipment. And the way personal protective equipment is distributed in Oregon is the state provides personal protective equipment, so that's gloves, masks, gowns. They provide those to the hospitals and the health systems, so the clinics and the hospitals. And the counties are responsible for providing personal protective equipment to everybody else. So, fire departments, EMS, our behavioral health clinics, our homeless shelters, anybody else that, local law enforcement, anybody else that needs personal protective equipment receives that through our EOC. The supplies come from many different sources. We had some stockpile at the state in what we called a strategic national stockpile, or SNS. That's been in place since right after 9/11, for some large cities even before then. So, that's one source. The state had a stockpile. So, the SNS is a federal stockpile, and it's placed strategically throughout the country. The state also had additional stockpile that we've been able to tap into. And then there has been some ability to order through normal vendors. So, the state gets it. They have a formula. A certain percentage goes right to the healthcare systems, and then a certain percentage goes to counties with COVID cases. And we have an allocation formula for allocating that PPE when it gets to the county level. So, then the other objective that we have is really to continue to monitor and mitigate the food system impact. We've all seen the, you know, Facebook posting and the news reports where you go into the grocery store and it's completely empty, and so we're monitoring that situation. We're getting out a lot of messages asking people not to hoard unnecessarily, to really only buy what they need to buy. And we're working really closely with the food banks and Meals on Wheels people. So, that's our priority, is to assure that they have the supplies that they need for the home-delivered meals, delivering meals to the shelters, and really ensuring that our most vulnerable people have access to nutritious food. And then the other priority is the business assistance, and I know John Southgate and Alex are here to talk about that, and we're really happy to have them working with the EOC and coordinating and taking the lead on that. So, I'm not going to talk about that much. So, we also have a finance chief, and so I wanted to give you a little bit of where we are in projections with finance at the EOC. So, first of all, I want you to hear, and I might need to repeat this, is that because the president declared an emergency at the federal level, and because our state declared an emergency, as well as the county, we are very confident that we're going to qualify for federal reimbursement for some of these expenses. And the projection is that the federal reimbursement would be about 75% of our costs. In addition, public health has received special grant funding from the CDC to cover some of the public health costs, so like the disease investigation, and the contract, and the persons of interest and persons under monitoring. So, that real core public health work is also covered, so things like additional health officer coverage, medication, some of the food that's actually provided to people that are positive. So, we received our first payment of $450,000, and we're anticipating a second allotment soon. So, there will be some reimbursement for these expenses. I just don't know exactly what it'll be at this time. John Wheeler is very tapped into that process. He understands the Stafford Act. I think he has it memorized, and he's really following that closely and reading each guidance and staying in close contact with our regional contact from the federal government. So, with all that said, our total, and these are projections through the end of April. So, for EOC staffing and supplies, the total is $2.4 million. Staff is about 2.3 of that. Supplies is relatively low at $116,000 right now. So, that's the EOC costs. And then you've heard a lot, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about a respite shelter. And right now, we're projecting those costs to be approximately $500,000. Okay, sure.
On that, is that the homeless shelter that Annette was talking about last week?
Yes.
Or is this different?
So, I'm going to give you more specific information on the homeless shelters and the respite. That was the cost of the respite shelter, which Washington County, at this point, is responsible for.
Do you want questions so far, or later?
Sure, sure. Yes. Sorry, I didn't see your thing up.
It's okay. And as you mentioned, that there's, the EOC now has an equity desk, and the situation report of last night or this morning, SitRep #21, mentions an EOC equity officer. Who is that?
So, our equity officer is Puse and Mint, and I do have, I'm going to give you more specific information about their activity.
Okay. Then the last thing I wanted to mention was, it's been, this isn't news to you, it's just in general, for Commissioner knowledge. It's been an interesting experience over the last couple of weeks in working with Marnie and staying in tune with her about how the situation has evolved, and the EOC's been working problems each and every day, and she's just incredible, and has been communicating with everyone and their brother, so that people have information and that problems get worked. One of the things we saw was through particularly Facebook, other social media channels, that TVFNR was asking for folks to provide PPE and highlighting the need for PPE. And some members, some of their employees, were posting that they didn't have PPE to do the job that they needed to do. And it was all somewhat difficult to go through while hearing from the EOC that they have enough PPE. We've all received today a communication from Chief Weiss about TVFNR operations and how they have PPE to do the job, but they are working on supplies in order to be prepared for surges that they anticipate ahead. I just wanted to raise the visibility that we have that information in our inboxes.
Great, thank you. And I didn't mention that piece, I talked about the SNS and the state supply and the vendors, but the other reason that we have enough PPE as of today is because we also are allowing or working with the fire departments to do their own collection. So, it's a volunteer donation system as well, and we actually are receiving donations at the EOC. We opened up a site, well, we opened up Blanton really as a storage site for PPE, because we're getting donations plus the other supplies that I didn't mention. And the other thing that we hear is this plea for homemade PPE. And at this time, OHA is continuing to say that they do not recommend use of homemade PPE. I understand, as a nurse, if I was in a hospital and I was concerned about having PPE, I completely understand their concern and their fear. However, there isn't evidence that these homemade PPEs, masks in particular, provide the protection, so it might actually cause a false sense of security. And so, we're doing our best to ensure that people do have PPE. I think at the federal level and at the state, they're even investigating things like, can they re-sterilize PPE, just to try to keep up. I do, I am concerned that if we saw those surge numbers at the moderate level, let's say the 6,100 patient level or the higher level, then those hospitals have every right to be fearful of that surge and not having enough supplies. So, I think we have to continue to do our best to keep that number at 1,000 or lower.
Could we just check to see, with what you've heard thus far, Commissioner Treese and Commissioner Rogers, do you have any questions thus far?
I don't have questions. Thank you, Marnie. And I would just like to quickly add that Marnie and her staff have been so responsive. I know Chair, you have mentioned that, but to me personally, but also about issues as we address constituent concerns. I also had the opportunity to go to the public health group last week and meet the men and women that are working on the front lines there, and it is very moving. So, thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
The only thing, the only thing I'd add is, Marnie, tonight, are you going to have in your graphs some projections that would show clearly what happens if different events occurred? Is that going to be available to us, so we can look at that?
Yes, I have, I have the actual report that I can't remember if it's...
I believe I sent the report to the commissioners late last week. It's the OHA Issue Paper Report.
Yeah, and I do have PowerPoint with slides that show the numbers that I told you verbally today, and I have a graph that I think will be helpful as well, and then a link to the full report.
I saw the report, but if you have graphs, that's so much more, I guess, telling of what's going on. So, if you had something, is there any way, those aren't interactive, so you can tell if it's instead of 90% or 70%, if there are gradients of that, what happens? Is that, they're not in...
That is included in the full report. If, you know, there's different examples, like if 90% of the population complied with the aggressive stay-at-home, what the numbers would be? That's the 1,000 numbers, and then if only 60% complied, there's a different number. I just didn't want to overwhelm you with too many numbers. And then the other thing that's available now that I can, I think it might have been sent, but I can send it, is Multnomah County has created a dashboard for the region. So, they've done it in cooperation with Clackamas and Washington County, but they have resources to be able to keep that up, that dashboard up. So, that might be another great resource where you can see on a daily basis sort of what's happening in the different counties.
Thank you. I was just interested enough, it's 88 or 87, what does each thing mean if we do certain measures, and what happens if, I don't want to name a name of a county, but let's say a neighboring county does nothing, what does that mean to us? I saw your numbers, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, I don't think that they have been able to do projections to that level. It's really, this was done by OHA, and these were, honestly, I was really impressed with Chair Harrington and some of the mayors who had read that report, because I felt like when I was reading it, I felt like I needed a PhD in epidemiology to understand the report. So, I tried to kind of boil it down to simple, kind of human language versus epidemiologist's language. But I can also look at it with you to, you know, walk you through some of the different projections. We could get on Teams or something and look at it together, because, I mean, I could take up an hour going through that report.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah, but it isn't to the level of, you know, if Washington County was really good and our residents really complied, but Multnomah and Clackamas or Yam Hill didn't, what that would mean, because it was really looking at compliance statewide, because we're still a mobile society, and we're not going to close our Washington County borders. I don't think that we would be able to do something like that. So, it was really looking at compliance statewide, and that's what we're really trying to get that message out to everybody, that they need to cooperate and just hang in there. We know it's tough.
May just to state the obvious, we not only have to cooperate, we have to follow the mandates and requirements of the governor's orders, et cetera.
Yes.
All of us.
Yes. And there is actually enforcement branch, and our local law enforcement, I know that they have received some complaints, and our environmental health specialists have also received complaints. What I've been told by those staff is that pretty much everybody, once they're notified that what they're doing is out of compliance, that they are cooperating and coming into compliance. So, just to continue on with the EOC, just so that you know, under operations, there's several branches. So, we've talked a little bit about the public health or the D cap, the disease prevention branch. We have a community services branch that's really working with, a lot of that work is with our nonprofits and with our schools and with our local businesses, making sure that they understand what the stay-home, stay-safe orders are, making sure that they're aware of resources, that they have communication about the situation, any guidance that comes out of OHA, whether it's for early childhood guidance, business guidance, school guidance, we're making sure that they know what those are, and providing any kind of technical assistance that they might need, letters, flyers, information in multiple languages. So, just making sure that their questions are answered. But it's also a two-way communication, so it's a way for us to hear where they're struggling and what they need out in the community. So, that's happening in the community services branch. And then we have a person under monitoring or a person under investigation support team. So, those are really the people that are, that have positive tests, that need support in their homes and monitoring and information to ensure that they're not spreading the disease. We have, as I've mentioned, an enforcement branch, which is law enforcement, as well as our environmental health staff who are enforcing the orders. We have an EMS branch to ensure that EMS system has what they need. Hello? And the food security branch, I mentioned that, and then the equity branch, which I'm going to talk a little bit more about in just a couple of minutes. So, one of the questions that comes up a lot is about testing, and why aren't we doing more testing? And is testing available? And so, what I can tell you today is that although there are more and more private labs and health systems who can do testing, it continues to be limited. And some of the limitation isn't necessarily the test kit itself, but it's the limitation of having enough healthcare staff to perform the test, as well as the personal protective equipment that we're trying to keep in case we need it for a surge. And so, every time somebody receives a test, that means you have a healthcare, a licensed healthcare provider using personal protective equipment for each separate person being tested. So, OHA continues to recommend that the general public should not get tested, and even people who have mild symptoms should stay home and not be tested at this point. It might seem counterintuitive to not test people with mild symptoms, and the reasoning behind that is because we're already telling you to stay at home if you're sick. And so, having that positive test isn't going to change anything. We're still going to tell you to stay at home. There is no medication. There isn't anything different that we would do because we know that you have a positive test. If we had unlimited healthcare workers and unlimited PPE, then we would, especially as epidemiologists, we would say, let's test everybody, because then we would know what our denominator is, and we would know where we are. But we don't have unlimited healthcare personnel or unlimited PPE. So, at this point, we're still asking people, if you're not sick or if your symptoms are very mild, to please not get a test unless your healthcare provider recommends it.
I understand and appreciate that. What I'm having trouble, the question I'm having trouble answering is, as folks are aware of the data analysis to indicate a future peak date, they're saying, well, how can we be confident that that's the peak date if we are limiting the amount of testing and therefore the data? And you mentioned the denominator.
Yes. So, I think definitely it's a balance now because we have a limited supply, and so we still need to prioritize that limited supply. You're thinking like an epidemiologist, where we want to know what that denominator is so that we can predict, better predict, when the peak will hit, how severe that peak will be. But it's just, it's just a matter of supply and demand at this point, and it's unfortunate. I wish, we all wish, that we had enough tests to test even asymptomatic people so that we would have a better idea, because some of the new data that's coming out as we interview more and more patients in the United States is that people are spreading this even before they know they're sick. And so, having more testing available would be ideal.
Does that summarize that the response, the response that we have to provide the community is, this is just the best we can do with the resources we have?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
I wish I had a better response, but that's it, yes.
There is kind of a creative, new tools that are coming out. There's a company out of San Francisco that has a thermometer that's tied into the internet system. I don't go into any great details. That's providing new kind of information that we didn't have before. It gives us some clues about peaks and where the next hotspots are going to be.
Yeah, and I don't know that they use that particular methodology in this OHA, but they did use, they did mine social media data, which is relatively new. but they did use, they did mine social media data, which is relatively new, I would say in the last five-ish years, that it's been commonly used to try to understand what's happening with a disease in different communities. So there is a lot of really interesting new data methodologies. Yeah.
Well, we're, I mean, we're way past the test time now. I mean, when that really could have helped us if we were at the early, early stages of containing something. But it's out there now, so the testing is not really...
And I, and I think that that is the best assumption, is that it's widespread, and that we all have to act as if we are infected, to protect our loved ones and our family and our coworkers. We need to stay at home as much as we can. And in particular, if we're sick, we need to stay at home, even if we have mild symptoms. So, there are some, you've probably heard, there are some drive-through testing. OHSU, Towaloothe and Virginia Garcia are doing drive-through tests. But those drive-through tests are restricted to their patients, who have a doctor's order, to healthcare workers or to first responders. So even though you might see that they have a drive-through test at the Hillsborough Stadium, for example, it's not for the general public. So the other question that's come up recently, and this is another one that I wish I had better information for you, but I at least want you to know what I know. So the other conversation that's happening is about alternative medical sites. And so one thing I think that's important is when public health refers to alternative medical sites, it doesn't just mean a mobile hospital. It can mean an alternative testing site, an alternative respite site, or it could be the alternative hospital site. It could be an alternative clinic site. So it's not just the mobile hospitals. There's been a lot of question about, are we going to have an alternative medical site? And what I believe people are asking, and what I believe that the push is for an alternative hospital site in Washington County. And we have been pushing as hard as we can to try to get more information about that. There was early indication that OHA was working on five sites within the metro area. There are, they have not made any direct contact with public health or with our EOCs in any of our three counties. There was some question about whether Clackamas County was being asked to set up an alternative medical site. We're still trying to sort out whether that was really a homeless respite center, or whether it was an actual hospital site. So unfortunately, I don't have a lot to share about that, other than there's a lot of rumors floating around out there. The public health, the regional public health medical group is trying to understand what's going on. We do know that Oregon State has requested assistance from the Army Corps of Engineer, but we don't know whether we're going to get that assistance. So I don't have a lot of new information, unless you learned something new since five-ish o'clock last night. Okay. So homeless shelter and respite. So there's a couple of activities that are going on. So one is, Community Action received funds from the state to provide some congregate shelters. And so they provided those funds to Beaverton, who, there was a rumor that Beaverton closed. They have not closed. They closed their winter shelter and opened this new shelter, and it was pretty seamless. So Beaverton Shelter is currently open seven days a week through the end of May. And then Cornelius has a shelter at St. Alexander. And our next priority is Tiger Towaloothe area. And the reason we did it and the order that we did it is we used data. And so we looked at the three largest concentrations of homeless, and that was Beaverton, Hillsborough, and the Cornelius-Forest Grove area. And so that's where we started. So those are open. And then we also are working on a respite shelter at Comfort Inn and Suites. And I believe that at least all the county gave the thumbs up today for the contract, as well as the hotel owner. And so we're planning to open this Thursday, April 2nd. This respite shelter, it's 114 rooms, and it will house people. We're able to cohort or separate people. So we will have people on different wings that are COVID-positive or symptomatic. So they'll be in one part of the hotel. And then we will also be able to house homeless with no symptoms in a separate part of the hotel. We have a great staffing plan. We have some behavioral health support for this plan. The hospitals are on board. We'll use Metro West for non-emergency transportation. So if they're leaving the emergency room or the hospital or Virginia Garcia Clinic, there will be no more putting them on a bus and trying to find a shelter for them. We'll use non-emergency transport to get them to the site beginning on Thursday.
Couple of quick questions. I assume you're talking about the hotel near the, actually the fairgrounds at Hillsborough on Cornell Road?
Yes.
Number two, does it make any sense to separate those who are definitely pos, have tested positive, as opposed to those who are simply symptomatic? I mean, I think if I was in that latter group, I would be concerned that if I wasn't positive, I will be soon, if I'm with all those people who are positive.
So the beauty of this is it's a hotel. Each person will have their own individual room. There is an emphasis and a plan to keep them isolated in their room. If they have to come out of their room, like if they have to get out and walk outside, or my, this makes my public health hairs curl, but if they have to go out and have a smoke, then they will be asked to put on a mask. They'll be checked out. They'll go outside, do whatever they need to do. They'll be checked back in and go back inside. Their meals will be served in the room. There's no congregate gatherings at all. So it is, it's not ideal, but it is, it's the best that we can do by providing them with individual rooms and really isolating them.
I have a question. I've been approached by a couple of different people now, as the word is spreading around the county, working to put together this respite hotel solution. The community need that has been shared with me is particularly with various cultural groups in our community, having multi-generational families living in the same home. And once one member of the family has exhibited symptoms of COVID-19, because there are so many people living in the home, it's difficult to isolate that sick person from others. And asking, is there a solution, either through this particular respite hotel arrangement, or through other hotels to get discounted rooms? Do you have any, any thoughts on that? And how do people get access into the evaluation or the possibility of support?
So right, right now, that's been really applied to people that are under monitoring or under investigation. And we've been using hotel vouchers through our public health branch. But it, but it has been raised, Virginia Garcia has raised concern about some of their families. And so Tricia, I just gave information to Tricia, and I think we're going to start thinking about, is there something more that we can do earlier in the process? And then the other, since you raised it, the other question that's been raised is healthcare workers. And if healthcare workers are working in the hospital or in the clinics with sick people, that they may not have, they may not be able to go home and isolate themselves from other members of the family. And that really is the responsibility of the healthcare systems, to take care of their staff. And so they're, they're working, they're either using hotel vouchers, or they're developing agreements with hotels for blocks of rooms. So the healthcare workers are being taken care of, or should be taken care of by the healthcare system. Okay. So the other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is, one of our big concerns and priorities is long-term care centers. We have one, an outbreak in one long-term care center, that I'm sure you're all very aware of. In addition, we have eight other, what we call clusters, which what that means is that at least one, either staff person or resident, is either tested positive or suspicious of having COVID-19. And so we have, within the public health operational branch, we are staffing up and are looking at hiring a consultant to help us support the long-term care organizations. So we've been having daily calls with them, and we've been working with them to implement mitigation procedures. So we are looking at, when, when does it make sense to test residents and staff? It doesn't always make sense, because there is an incubation period. So you can't just go in and automatically test everybody and assume, okay, well, three people are positive and everybody else is okay, because the everybody else that was okay might be positive two days from now. So, so it's, there's some art and some science to when, when we test and when it makes sense to test. Certainly cleaning, isolation in rooms, making sure that meals are served only in rooms. None of the assisted living centers are allowing visitors. There's no new admissions, and staff are not allowed to work at multiple centers, which is kind of normal practice. Sometimes they're large organizations, and they might have two or three different centers. And then we're also offering a lot of support for the assisted living centers to provide to family, families who have loved ones there, residents and staff. They have a lot of questions and concerns. And so we're helping with things like letters and information about how people can keep their loved ones safe. So I just wanted you to be sure and know that about that. And then equity and trauma, sure.
Excuse me. There was a, just about two hours ago, Oregon Live posted a list of long-term and assisted living centers around the metro area that have one or more cases. So that's out in the public now, and I suspect we'll be getting more calls about that. The list, I think that there were fourteen of them on the list, maybe more.
Yeah. So this is a good time to remind us that there's notification that our public health team gets through the system. And then there are individual families who have, you know, family members in these adult living and assisted living situations that may have information 24 hours or sooner than our staff does. And so just like we've, we've seen in prior weeks, our news organizations may be ahead of the best information we have from public health.
Yes. And, and the numbers that I gave you were from eight o'clock this morning, so I can check in, because staff does, they have daily calls with each of the long-term care centers. So the, the number of clusters or, and/or outbreaks may have changed. So I can double-check on that for tonight.
And my purpose is just in giving you a heads-up there. And Chair, you're absolutely right. There are different streams of information that the media get.
Talking too much. My throat's getting dry. So equity and trauma-informed lens. So as Chair Harrington pointed out, we have a new equity officer. And so what we've done so far is we have reached out to migrant camps in our nurseries, and we're providing kits with food, goodies, and information about COVID and protection. We have, excuse me. Dry, sorry. Paid Facebook and other social media reports in, in several languages. We also have been checking in and providing information to over 300 partner organizations. So a lot of it is in Spanish, but also other languages. Sorry. I just got a dry tickle all of a sudden. Thanks. Yeah, I don't, it's just dry. Too much coffee and not enough water.
So that's your secret, coffee?
Yes, coffee. Yes, I'm a, I'm a little bit of a coffee addict. So then, the other, so, so we're working to get a lot more information out in a lot of different languages, and we're really working through our cultural, culturally responsive organizations to do that. And then the last thing is, is we now have, at the EOC, a staff wellness room. And then you may notice, as you walk through, we also have self-care stations, so where people can get little treats, or fiddle, fidget toys, or just get away and take some deep, deep breaths. And then tonight, I will end with the messages around stay home, stay safe, reminding people what they can do by staying home, remembering the social distance of six feet, washing their hands frequently, using hand sanitizer if warm soapy water is not available, washing those surfaces, avoid touching your face, nose, and mouth, covering coughs and sneezes. I didn't have tissue. Well, I guess I would have. And, and most importantly, staying home when you can, in particular, if you're sick. And that's, that's what I have. Yes.
I just had a question about 211. We've, we've tried to educate members of our community that if they have questions about COVID-19, to dial 211.
Yes.
Is, so if someone dials 291, 211, but they need language support other than English, is, are there interpreters available through that?
Yes, they, they have phone interpreter support. Yes. And that's normal on 211, and in particular with this. Yes.
So yeah, we hear on the news media, a new terminology, at least that I've been listening to for the last few days, called hotspots, talking about, obviously, concentrated areas around the country, and what they are considering doing to really sequester those hotspots from people moving in and out of there. Has, has there been any discussion in Oregon? And the reason why I ask this, I guess, give you a little bit more information. My son is in Idaho, kind of in a remote area in Idaho, and they are talking about closing some of the major highways in and out of that area, going into the Boise area, because they're trying to, again, restrict the spread of this. Have we had any of those conversations in Oregon, talking about restricting travel between the metropolitan areas?
I'm sure those conversations are happening, but at this point, the governor's order is as restrictive as, that's the most restrictive orders at this point. I have seen, just like all of you, media reports, like the coastal, some of the coastal cities, for example, are saying, you know, asking visitors not to come and closing their hotels. But as far as I know, there's been no, I mean, the struggle with that is, it can also restrict goods and services that are really important to this outbreak. So, you know, you have to figure out, well, which truck gets through with which supplies and what's essential. And so I think that that's really troublesome to do. And I haven't heard anything about closing any borders or closing the metro area off from the rest of Oregon. So I think it's, it would be a very, very difficult strategy to restrict travel more than it's restricted at this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? And that includes you, Commissioner Trese?
No, thank you.
All righty. What's next?
I will see you tonight, and you'll see this on the big screen.
I'm confused as to what's up on the, next on the agenda?
We're still under COVID-19. We have John Southgate, who will talk about the emergency small business assistance.
And I'm going to make a quick in-
And I'm going to make a quick introduction, please. First of all, I would like to thank Marnie and her team, all of the folks in Public Health and the EOC for what you're doing. There's no question that you're working long, hard hours, and there's, the appreciation level is just beyond belief for all of us, I'm certain. What I'd like to do is take a moment and introduce John Southgate and the work that we've been doing. We have a small team that has been working for the last 10 days in response to emergency support for small businesses and their employees with a focus on minority-owned businesses. Like I said, we've been working for about 10 days. The team includes Chris Defaba, Aaron Doyle, John Southgate, Commissioner Willie, myself, and our fearless leader, Alex Fidal. We have, we've really come a long way in a very short period of time in our thinking. And it's important to know that we have evolved based on the information that we've received from the, from the region, from staff, from commissioners, so that we can put together concepts that will effectively and efficiently address the emergency situation. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Willie.
Thank you, Pam. As Pam indicated, over the past few weeks, we have met several times to discuss in depth how to best provide financial assistance to our small minority business sector. We've developed several priorities that we wanted to accomplish in this process. One is to provide funding to Washington County small minority-owned businesses fast, to help them get through the next few weeks and months without closing their doors if possible. In this process, we emphasize our DEI resolution in equitably distributing this money. We have accountability during the process and after the money is distributed to evaluate our successes, and to minimize fraud without easy access to business licenses, and considering the vast number of requests anticipated, fraudulent applications are a real concern. We reviewed the email to Chair Harrington from the Racial Equity Collaborative regarding their top-tier recommendations, and incorporated their suggestions that were consistent with our business assistance program. Specifically, item two, shore up business and service sectors; item three, create innovative and rapid funding mechanisms; and four, increase communication. All of these were areas incorporated in our discussion and recommendations. And just as a, a piece of data, in Washington County, we have over 21,000 small businesses. Seventy-eight percent of them have 10 employees or less. That was our targeted area, was small businesses. John Southgate has been instrumental in research and outreach to other agencies, providing business assistance, and is prepared to give you a brief overview of programs available. We wanted to share this information with you, our research, and address any concerns that you may have. I will ask, that John has a lot of information to share, he's going to try and keep it concise, we're asking that you hold your comments and questions until he has completed his presentation. So with that, John Southgate. Turn your microphone on, please. You went to the same school Marnie did, I think.
Yeah.
And you need to put it right in front of you.
Okay, thank you. Sounds like that's better. So, good afternoon, everyone. As Commissioners Treese and Willie introduced, I've been tasked to work with our work group that Alex Fidal is doing a great job of leading on coming up with a small business assistance program for businesses in Washington County. Just to jump in, originally, what we were looking at is an idea that initially Beaverton and the city of Hillsborough, and now other cities have adopted of a small grant program run directly through and from the county, with the basic idea of providing, I'll call it, gap dollars for that time from now until when federal and/or state dollars could be available. I will note, as an important aside, that those, both at the state and the federal level, there are programs in the works, but those are still out there a ways, that's a concern, plus, they may not necessarily be available to all of our businesses in our communities, especially in our minority communities. So, hold that thought. In looking at that type of a program, of a small grant program run by the county, we ran into several concerns, and, and these were based partly on our own vetting and also partly on looking at what was happening in our partner cities. First of all, there really is not a vetting or feedback loop, unless we want to take a lot of time, which I don't think we have the luxury of, the dollars would go out there relatively indiscriminately. As Commissioner Willie said, there's a risk of fraud, there's also just a risk of money going to a bona fide business that's about to close, and, and you might say throwing good money after bad, that was a real concern. We were also concerned relative to our DEI policies that disadvantaged businesses may not be as well-positioned to take advantage of the opportunity that we would try to create. I think, I'll also note, another challenge with a small grant program, this is true of anything we might do, is that whatever we're doing is going to be relatively a drop in the bucket. As, as Commissioner Willie identified, there's over 21,000 businesses, thousands of them are small businesses that are directly affected by the COVID-19 virus. I wish we had limitless funds, but we don't. The last concern that we had about a small business grant program, in light of what I'm about to tell you, is it doesn't have any direct leverage capacity, and so, I'll, I'll describe that in a moment. So, I spoke with my esteemed colleague and friend Lloyd Purdy in the city of Tigard, and Tigard, like now PDC, I'm sorry, Prosper Portland and others, is looking at a different model of partnering with CDFIs, Community Development Financial Institutions. Think of what CDCs are to housing, nonprofit affordable housing providers, CDFIs are to small businesses. So, let me run down, I'll try to do this as quickly as I can, a number of the efficacious advantages of working with CDFIs. First of all, this is their line of business, this is what they do. We don't do small business grants, CDFIs do. They expressly target minority-owned and other disadvantaged businesses. The, the CDFIs that I've been talking to in the last day, both focus, MISO was one of them, Minority Enterprise, I think Society of Oregon, they, or Services of Oregon, they, as their name implies, focuses on minority-owned businesses. Craft III is another CDFI, they do a little bit larger scale, but they also focus on the difficult-to-bank entities. Both entities, again, I spoke with senior officials with both of these just in the last 24 hours, and I'm going to read through the important salient points. Maybe I'll say at the outset, they would largely defer to us on what parameters we want. So, for instance, our desire that, that any program that's set up serves the entire county, appreciated that feedback from the meeting last week, so it would not discriminate by geography, it'd be available county-wide. They could both get the dollars out the door quickly.
I don't think we had consensus on that, it was just a piece of feedback, but I don't think we came to consensus as a full commission on geography.
Okay, then that's probably something you'll want to discuss, then. There, the, the, both entities could leverage dollars, especially if, if there's loans. Let me talk for a moment about what loans might look like, because one's first reaction might be, the last thing a company needs is to take on more debt service. So, in both cases, they could do deferred payments, where for month one through X, maybe month one through six, there's no payments, and then, there's interest-only payments in month seven through 12. This is an example, this is not a specific proposal. And then, regular payments start a year from now, when, Lord willing, things, businesses are back on the feet. I'll also mention that these organizations, because this is the space that they, they work in, are set up to work with businesses, not just to get the money right now as a stopgap, but to help position them for future success. And I'll say, too, that both organizations are, were excited to be contacted by Washington County, and I think going forward, there's a wonderful opportunity to work with them on an ongoing basis, not just to help address our immediate crisis. Both of them are setting up simple processes. In the case of loans, they would talk about, again, deferred payments and discounted interest rates, to leverage our dollars to, to achieve those advantages. The other parameters that we've talked about, focus on small businesses, locally owned, no national chains, translated applications and assistance, those are all things that they could provide. I'll also say that these two organizations are complementary. So, MISO does a very small, they do grants and loans as small as $500. Craft III generally plays in the 10,000 to 50,000, there's flexibility, neither, neither one is adamant about grants versus loans, dollar amounts, but, so again, they'll look to us for what parameters we want to lay out for them if we go this route. I think, they both talked about modest fees, I'll say, in, under 10% to, to cover the administrative cost of, of delivering these dollars. The last point, I guess I want to make, is that if we go this route, I'm prepared to work with disseminating this opportunity as broadly as, as possible. So, with regard to the SBA disaster loans we talked about last week, I'm letting people, you know, the chambers know, our economic development colleagues in other cities around the county know, I'm, I'm keeping everybody informed, I'm letting know business associations and urban unincorporated areas like Aloha, we've talked about with Commissioner Scanton, Raleigh Hills, et cetera. So, those are my opening salvo comments. Before launching to your questions, I, I want to make sure I didn't miss any points from my fellow work group members, so. Maybe starting with, with Commissioner Treese, since she's on the phone.
Thank you, John. I, I think that you covered the issue. I, I just want to reemphasize the fact that this is an emergency situation, emergency dollars with the potential to be recouped since we are now a disaster area.
Yeah, and, and again, just to emphasize a couple of the things that we started down the road, anticipating that we would handle this internally, and quickly realized with the results of Hillsborough, specifically Hillsborough, and I think Beaverton and Tuolleton, all three of them opened their programs and almost closed them within 24 hours because they were overwhelmed. We anticipated that we might receive 1,000 applications, and we just felt like we were not prepared. And that's why we started to go a different direction, and the interesting thing is, in that process, anytime we can take money that we wanted to put into this process and have an organization multiply with other monies that they have available to them, so when we put in a dollar, we may be able to multiply that by three or by five, and that's those are your numbers that we were hearing from the CDICs that, that, that they were, could accomplish for us. So, we're thinking, not only do we not have to do this internally when we're not really qualified to do all of this processing, but we have organizations that are qualified and can multiply the dollars, so we thought it was very much a win-win. I was happy to hear the report that, and the homework that John had done on that, so. Is there anything else, Alex, that you feel like we need to mention before we open it up for Q and A?
Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, Alex Fidal, Assistant to the Board. I think that, just to highlight a couple of things that John said, is that this money, the CDFIs are very well-positioned to help businesses with technical assistance and applying for other, other forms of aid, and combining aid. So, for example, if we had a $500 grant that we were able to award a business, that could be combined with then a larger loan with very favorable terms that would help the business really get, by long-term, the $500 would be spent in a day or a week, whereas the, the full loan might help them get, get much further. And so, the, the leveraging that this approach provides, I think, is, maximizes the effect of these dollars. And also, the concept of splitting up the, the money that we invest into grants that are just straight grants to, and focused specifically only for businesses owned by disadvantaged community members, so minority-owned, women-owned, veteran-owned, disabled, that population, and then having other dollars that are actual loan dollars, which would be lent out and then paid back, and then, the fund would turn over, and so, it would be a, a longer-term strategy for shoring up small businesses in the county. So, I just wanted to pilot those two points.
Okay, any, now we're ready for Q and A, so let's hear them.
So, I just have a few different questions. I really appreciate the research that's gone into this. I want to come back to the point on the area under discussion. I know Commissioner Rogers made a comment on the phone last week when there was potential to narrow this just to urban unincorporated areas, if I remember what he said. If I remember correctly what he said is something along the lines that that excludes about 80% of his district. I'm not worried about that because, from a district commissioner's standpoint, you're elected by a district to make countywide decisions, and that's where this program, as I understand it, you're trying to look at how is there a program that meets the needs of the small business community throughout the county? I haven't heard any other area parameters. I guess this is the concept presentation today? That's another question I have. Where, what is the process here? I, I'm assuming there's an endpoint by which there is a program that people can apply for. I hear research, but I don't have any clue as to what happens between today's point A and that point, whatever.
I'll respond to that. The, the intention of the work group and what has been going on is that this is like all the other emergency relief measures that we're instituting. This will move ahead, unless there are major objections from the board, this will be rolled, rolled out after this meeting.
But what is it? I haven't heard any dollar figures. I'm worried about that $25 million liability that we have for community corrections. I'm not sure what it is yet.
Madam Chair and members of the board, just to address your first question about geography, so, because we don't want to, we want to make sure that we're getting aid to businesses that we are wanting to assist, and so, that's the most vulnerable businesses, small businesses that are owned by disadvantaged community members, and so, we don't, many of them may be located in cities, many of them could be located in the unincorporated areas, there might even be some businesses in the rural areas, and so, what, instead of focusing on geography, we're focusing on the type of business and their need. And so, built into the guidelines that we've been discussing are businesses that have not received aid from a city program, for example, that would, that would significantly, so that they're not double-dipping essentially into a city program and then a separate county program. And then, in terms of a timeline that you had asked questions about, if there are no major, major objections to, to this approach, our plan is to work the rest of the week to solidify the details of the program, which we have already got a starting, starting point based on the eligibility criteria we've been working on for a grant program. And so, we got input from Coalition of Communities of Color, Adelante, and John L. Bell as well. So, we will, again, reach out to the five, some community-based organizations that are in Van, but that are part of the county, and to get additional input on guidelines for this type of a program, and then, meeting with the CDFIs to get their input as well and the options that are available. So, working that the rest of the week, building up a communications plan, with the idea of next week then communicating the availability of this program throughout the week, and then the following Monday, potentially starting to receive applications. And so, that would be our expedited timeline to try and get aid out as quickly as possible. So, but if, you know, we run into some challenges, we'll, we'll roll with the punches and do what we can to continue on, but, so we can get it out relatively quickly in two weeks with a very well-formed program in place. And the figure that we had, that we had been discussing, we spoke with the county administrator, interim county administrator Steve Rhodes, and Jack Liang, the Chief Financial Officer, in, in the range... range of about $1 million, because that would be substantial enough to really leverage additional monies for small businesses. As John mentioned, or Commissioner Willie mentioned, you could get three or five times as much money into the community by leveraging this amount of money. It would also allow us to kind of split it into the grant category, which we're thinking about 30% or $300,000 worth, about maybe a third, and then the rest for, potentially for loans. Again, with equity lens on the loan approach as well, but also available to small businesses throughout the county.
Just if I may add a point, it's my understanding also that this, some of these funds may be reimbursable through the disaster aid. So it's like the other funds we're expending in the disaster would be the reimbursable element.
To further climb on that point, the CDFI model is also a great place to, if we receive federal and state aid and we want a place to use that, to get that money out in a very efficient, effective way, that's another place that we could add additional dollars that wouldn't come from our general fund. It would come from the federal or state money.
So point of clarification, I'm not sure if I'm hearing one category or two categories. So is there minority-owned, veteran, service-disabled businesses, and then small businesses, 10 or fewer? Or is it small businesses that are owned by?
So if I might, the idea is targeting small businesses with 50 or less employees. We find that most small businesses have actually less than 10. 25 is actually a pretty big number. And so we're still working through that. It might be actually 25 might be the upper limit.
I think the short answer, though, is you put those two together. That's what we're trying to do. We're not trying to differentiate between small businesses and small minority-owned businesses. We're trying to identify small minority-owned businesses that, again, are well within our DEI resolution and with the equity lens being one of the primary leaders.
Thank you.
To further that point, the grants that would be focused on minority-owned businesses, because those are the most vulnerable, right? And they need the most help with the least strings attached to it. Whereas the loans would then be, we would still have an equity lens, but it wouldn't be solely restricted to minority-owned businesses. Whereas the grants, I think the discussion has been...
So there are two. No wonder I'm confused.
Yeah, okay.
So depending upon who we're hearing from, I'm hearing different things, which I get, things are still being worked through.
Well, let's give this little time to just, to get this all discussed. I haven't even had a chance to ask a single question. I'd like to ask a few questions.
And I'm still working on mine, too.
Well, I know your questions. Go ahead, why don't you finish up your questions? But I feel like it's a little early to say that we don't have clarity about this program. Why don't we give this enough time to work out all the clarity, or not?
And one of our objectives was to minimize the, obviously, there's a lot of opinions and a lot of deliberation that could happen, and we wanted to work out the details, but at least get sort of the thumbs up for the approach. The details, we can, the faster we work them out, the faster we can get aid out. The longer we take, obviously, the more well-formed it will be. And we're happy to take either approach, but just, we're generally, because last week we spent a lot of time working on the grant approach, and we didn't really get the kind of guidance, clear guidance from the board last week in terms of the direction that we should be going.
So if I could continue with my questions and not be cut off?
All right. And when you get done, let me know, so then I can ask my questions.
Great.
Yeah, great indeed.
So the reason I'm trying to understand if this is one group or two is because I'm concerned that we do have businesses in our rural communities that don't have the same level of business association support that our urban businesses do. And so that's why I'm looking for that case model to see if it's included or not. That's all.
Aid for rural businesses, is that the question?
Yes, as there are many small businesses in our rural communities.
So it would be countywide, independent of geography, it would be about the type of business and the need that they have, regardless of where they're located in the county. And part of our communications plan would be working with the chambers, working with the five CBOs to get the word out about the availability of this funds.
My concern on that is that a lot of our rural businesses, whether they're CSAs or small producers, aren't tied in, right? If they're just small businesses, they're not necessarily tied into chambers, and they're not necessarily tied in with CBOs. So the fact that, from the plan as I heard it, was next week you would go public with this barring concerns, and then the following week accept applications. So as long as we have communication channels to reach out for them, to them.
Madam Chair.
Need asked and answered, I guess, is fine from my standpoint.
Absolutely. That was something that Adelante had brought to our attention about the small businesses in rural areas tied to food production and the fact that farmers' markets are all closed. And so a lot of those types of businesses are hurting. And so that is something we've heard and will try and incorporate.
And we do have both farm market stores, you know, I'm thinking of the South Store Cafe as well, Smith Barry Barn, businesses of that type that are out in our rural areas. That's all.
I think, I really appreciate the question, because I think it's incumbent on us to use every vehicle that we might find. And I don't know what the whole universal list of such vehicles are, but even like Soil and Water District or Farm Bureaus, or, you know, winery associations or something like that, there's a number of venues. We will not get to 100%, but if we can get closer to 90% rather than 70% or 50%, so that's a great point.
Okay. So I hear that there's the means for, depending, what I'm hearing is that the program will have different aspects, and I'm fine with that. There are means for small businesses throughout Washington Countywide, but especially as you talked about, the minority-owned, service-disabled veterans and the process that you have. So I don't have any, I can't remember the phrase you were using earlier, unless there's some major concerns. I don't have major concerns. Those are some of the questions that I know I shared with you over the last week or two about this type of program. So I'm satisfied.
Well, I think just rest assured, too, that we, we know we've got a couple more steps in our meetings with these organizations to really put the structure to it, and we'll certainly report back to the board with probably a little bit more finely-defined process and target of this. But we've, like John said, most of this communication with these organizations has been in the last 24 hours. So we are learning on the run, but we'll certainly keep you up to speed.
Thank you for running.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay, thank you. Couple of questions. One is, what's the source of the leverage money? What kind of leverage money are we talking about with these CFIs?
The leverage funds from, include private foundation dollars. I believe the OCF is involved. I'm talking to the service deliverer.
Private community foundation?
Yes, yes, thank you. And then also CRA dollars, Community Reinvestment Act. Private banks have to invest in organizations like these. So they love CDFIs because they help them deliver on their obligations under federal law to circulate their dollars in disadvantaged communities.
Okay. How are CFIs established? Is that a state or federal program? And, I mean, how do you become such an organization? And who puts the stamp of approval that allows you to call yourself that?
I might be able to find out that real quick while you go on to your next question. I'm not sure if they're certified state-by-state or under federal law, so I will look that up while you pose the next question slowly. Make it an easy one.
Yeah. Then, assuming that there's a certain level of fluidity here, but what was the rough ratio that was being kicked around as far as loans versus grants?
Well, the model we're talking about is two to one. $2 of loan for every $1 of grant, so roughly 300 and 600,000, because the loans are what leverage the other dollars.
Okay.
Well, if you pop up, just Google CDFI coalition, it tells there's advocacy for the federal government to fund these organizations as well. So I haven't found the answer to the question of, are they state-licensed or federally-licensed? It may be a combination, but, so we'll have to get back to you on that one.
Federally certified.
They're federally certified.
Little help from my friend.
We work together, what?
Which is a little bit like the clinics. I mean, there's a group of clinics, health clinics, that gets certified as health providers under a federal program.
You know, I might have mentioned last week, we did this at what used to be called the Portland Development Commission, interstate avenue businesses that were going to be affected by the construction. We worked with the CDFI, and Portland Development Commission wrote a check which allowed them to write down their interest rate and also have deferred payments. And it kept a number of businesses, several dozen small businesses afloat, not a single one closed. And they got that stopgap funding without taking on debt service in the immediate term because they were deferred payment. So I've seen the model work well.
Okay. And then I guess the last, my last point is more of a comment. I'm not sure if we came to a consensus, as the chair noted, but when we use general fund dollars, those are, those come from everywhere in the county, and there's a longstanding principle that we use general fund dollars that are spent everywhere, you know, potentially throughout the county as opposed to urban unincorporated. They would need to be a special benefit. That money would come from those distinct, discrete areas for discrete benefit to those areas. So I would think that this would necessarily, under our longstanding principles, be something that would apply to everybody across businesses, across the entire length of the county, unless we were to make a radical change from longstanding principles.
I think you're spot on, Dick. I think that's what has been the focus. We've tried to toss the net out as broad as we can in our county debt to make this a great program.
Are you, maybe our last question, are you looking for some consensus from us on or where we are, thumbs up or thumbs down on this?
I think we're generally hoping to hear questions like the ones that you and the chair have posed, so that we can make sure that we're not missing anything, and if there are concerns, that we could address those.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just throw, I do support this. I have thumbs up on this.
My questions are these. One, why I made the comment about the countywide impact, I think Commissioner Scouton said it well. I just need to speak clearly so they can hear you. Pam, can you hear me? Can you hear me, Pam? I guess not.
Yes, I can. I took a moment to get you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
My initial concerns were the ones that I raised last week, and that was that general fund dollars have to be spread general fund-wide, and I'm hearing that that's fixed. It's important to me because 80% of my district's in cities, according to LUT numbers. And so I think you fixed that. I'm happy. I like the DEI lens to a point. I don't think we can parse the county into certain buckets. I think there's a lot of people with needs who are not necessarily fitting in those buckets. I mean, you mentioned veterans, there'd be a group. Handicap folks who have special needs would be another group. There's people who have gender identification issues, they may group. And all of those might be folks that you would call white folks. And so saying we're not going to help small businesses because of color is not, in my spirit, of what I thought DEI was. So I'm probably misjudging and mishearing what you're saying. I like it. I think we've not had equity, and I appreciate we're going in that direction, but I don't want to swing so far that everybody's not treated equally. So comment.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Rogers, if I might respond to that. So the first, to your first point about geography, definitely wanted to make it countywide. What we wanted to avoid was double-dipping. So if a city had a program and a business had benefited, we don't want to do that. Same thing with hotels. WCVA has a program where they're helping hotels, and so we didn't want, again, to help businesses that have already received some short-term help. In terms of equity, I think that the reasoning is that they're historically disadvantaged, and so they've already dealt with disadvantages historically. On top of that, now you have this crisis. And so we wanted, if we have very, very limited dollars to provide in grants, we wanted to focus those on the most vulnerable, the most needy, while at the same time be recognizing that we also don't want to aid businesses that are then going to fail relatively quickly. So there is a sustainability element, and then there's an equity element with the grants. But again, opening it up to, as you mentioned, equitable, is equitable for everyone. The idea behind equity is to help those that need a little bit more help get that extra help that they need, and then treat everyone equally at that point.
My only comment back would be, though, I certainly understand preferences, and I understand that we need to do that, and I understand the starting point is not the same for everybody. So I agree with everything that you said. Maybe I'm a little more sensitive being out on the campaign trail a little bit more, but people feel that equity is equity. And then if we don't message right, and maybe you will, hopefully you will, but if your message is, is that I'm sorry, you don't qualify to a large percentage of the population, you're going to be not so keen on supporting us on a number of other issues. And so if it can be messaged well, I think it can be sold, anything can, but I just caution you.
With the equity focus, I think we did want to try and be consistent with our DEI resolution, which did include some of the other groups that you had mentioned as well that are also historically disadvantaged. So I just wanted to make that.
And from my standpoint, Roy, this is an excellent opportunity for us to reemphasize not only our commitment in the resolution a month or two ago, but to walk our talk. And I think this is a great opportunity to do that. So we'll make sure that we are equitable across all factors. But at the same time, we're really excited about the fact that we can emphasize DEI in this process.
I would agree with Commissioner Willie and also emphasize that the CDFIs that we're working with are groups that focus in that direction. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank the Chair, Commissioner Scouton, and Commissioner Rogers for your ear today. So thank you.
With that, I think we're done. Okay?
Any other questions?
Sounds like we're going forward.
Going forward. That's right. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, guys.
Sorry, anything else on the COVID-19 update?
No, we've got it. Thank you.
All righty. Then we'll move on to the next.
Could I make one comment, please? I just want to thank everybody for using your microphones. It makes a huge difference when you're on this end. And, Dick, I want to say a special thank you to you.
Did trails get off the agenda?
Well, it's like equity, so people need some extra help, right? So thanks for the coax.
Okay, we're on to the next agenda topic, our 2020-2021 Long Range Planning Program.
Good afternoon. I'm just going to kick it off over here, and then I'll turn it over to Andy and Teresa to take over. I'm Stephen Roberts, CEUT Director, and we're back. This is actually the first year we've done this. We, in the past, have sort of done a briefing with you a month or so before the work program, I think, gets adopted, and then we come back to you the day we're asking you to adopt it. So this is a little bit different for us to come back a week ahead of time, and we want to do that just as a quick final check-in with you all, just to make sure that we feel that we're headed in the right direction with the program that we're going to bring before you next week for adoption. As you remember, this is the, it's a pretty intensive task. We actually started this probably right after Thanksgiving, or probably in earnest a little before, which now feels like about a decade ago, based on the pace of the last few weeks here. But this is our process so that we ensure... But this is our process so that we ensure that with the resources that we have, we focus our attention on the areas that are the most important to you as our leadership. So I think with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Teresa to walk through what we have for you.
Thank you, Stephen, and thank you Chair Harrington and Commissioners. It's good to see everybody. I've been working from home for two weeks, so it's good to see everyone. So Stephen mentioned we're going to be talking about the Long Range Planning Work Program today. As a summary and a refresher, the work program covers the work of the Community Planning and Transportation Planning Groups within the Planning and Development Services Division. So these two groups make up long-range planning. The tasks are organized into three tiers. Tier one, the highest priority, down to tier three, the lowest. We have 21 tasks in tier one at this point. Those include a lot of subtasks and then fewer on tiers two and three. Just also as a refresher, tier one includes a wide range of tasks, including all of our ongoing work and discretionary, non-discretionary tasks, regional planning, and then the short and long-term comprehensive planning projects. This is a list of the short-term comprehensive planning projects. Just a couple of the significant ones would be housing affordability and implementation of House Bill 2001, our Significant Natural Resources Assessment Implementation work and short-term rentals issue paper implementation. And then for the long-term planning, these include actually some of the tasks that were on the last slide. So our work on housing affordability and on the Significant Natural Resources will be longer term. They're on the short-term one because we will have ordinances coming forward this year that, so the board will see some work on that this year. Other long-term planning includes the Trails Planning and Coordination, our Urban Reserves Transportation Study, and Complete Streets Design Update. Stephen mentioned a little bit about the schedule. So January 28th, the draft work program was released for a 30-day review and comment period. During that time, we did brief the Committee for Community Involvement and the Planning Commission. And then we received 21 comments, actually, during that time. So what we're here for today primarily is to go over the comments that we've received and let you know how we're thinking about responding. And there are a couple of places where we wanted to get maybe some board direction if you did want us to move forward on a particular request. And we'll be back then, April 7th, which is next week. Originally, there was planned that there would be more time for this. So we had planned, I think, to be here last week or the week before.
So I have a question before we go into this. Are we able to stand up the Planning Commission during these times through, you know, Microsoft meetings or Zoom or?
Yeah, I think we're in the same boat. We're comparing notes with county administrative office staff and Allen's team, working on how we set up public meetings so that we have public testimony opportunities to facilitate doing that. We have hearings, officer hearings. So we have this issue on a number of fronts and we're tracking this one as well. So our hope is that we'll be able to stand up Planning Commission meetings. Probably we need to start in May, I would think, with our ordinance hearings. So we're anticipating that we'll be up and running by that time.
So as you put together the work program with us to adopt it next week, have you been able to look at it from the lens of we might have to have these virtual meetings for, well, through the ordinance season, I guess would be the worst-case scenario?
Yeah, so Teresa and her team do an amazing job. They really map out a schedule for every ordinance and anticipated filing dates and hearing dates and all those things. And so I think that's always our plan and the actual implementation will be what it is, right? So we may need to adapt and adjust as we go, but we're going to make a really good faith effort to try to hit our original schedule.
I think I'll add too is, this is all developed prior to what's been going on the last few weeks. So we recognize there could be all sorts of curveballs thrown into this this year and we'll just roll with that and keep you informed as we go if things change.
Are there, as we go back over the topics, I remember that some of them, like the Significant Natural Resources one, we really need to get done this year, whereas other ones, if they slide, they slide. So as we look at what you had, have you marked which ones we absolutely have to make sure we get taken care of this calendar year?
We haven't marked it here, but we are definitely thinking about that.
You've got that information.
And yeah, and we know that you've noted in particular the Significant Natural Resources changes we do need to do this year. The enforcement order hearing was actually delayed for two months, so we don't have an answer yet on that from the state. But we are still expecting that we will get that direction and that is something that we're, as staff at least, committed and we've talked to the board about doing this year. Probably most of the other ordinances that are planned are not critical and could potentially move out if needed.
Okay. That's fine enough then.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
So we did during the comment period receive 21 letters and emails. We received them from three cities, Tigard, Beaverton, and Wilsonville, the CCI, Home Plate Youth Services, the Washington County Racial Equity Collaborative, Twelton River Keepers, Home Builders, CPO Forum, Techtronics, and then a number of private individuals. And I'll go through the specific comments in the next couple of slides. So there were some themes in the comments. Some of them related to housing affordability and homeless programs, a lot on Significant Natural Resources and tree protection. We did have a smattering of transportation topics, short-term rental regulations. We actually only had two comments, but we did have, I think, 76 comments on the issue paper, so I'll talk a little bit about that. And then received another comment again about contractors' establishments and the Techtronics Development Agreement extension. From Tigard, the mayor of Tigard, to help with housing affordability, they did make a request, he did make a request to support exemption from the transportation development tax for affordable housing specifically. This topic was considered by the board in 2019. And at that time, there were concerns with backfilling and shifting the financial burden for infrastructure should that change go into effect. And I guess it was also discussed with the mayors. There was no consensus at that point.
Can I interrupt you because I know, okay. That TDT, that TDT, it is, yeah, I'm not up for it. The TDT certainly is not just county money, it's city money as well. Did we ask whether or not they were waiving their TDTs and their system development charges? Or are they saying just the county portion?
I believe the city is waiving their specific SDCs, and I think that's parks and there was something else. But since the TDT is a countywide tax, they aren't able to do that.
Right. I didn't know what they're doing.
Unilaterally.
Thank you.
The second was a request from.
I'm sorry, just to follow up on that. So have we, as a commission, had a conversation about what we think about that? Am I not remembering this conversation or have we not had it?
There was a discussion.
Prior board.
Yeah, prayer work session. I don't know the exact date.
The first half of 2019, I think.
And what, refresh my memory, what did we decide?
To make no changes.
So I guess the concerns, I think, that we mostly heard was that if you do waive it here, then there is a hole in the funding that needs to be filled somehow. And it wasn't certain where would that money come from.
And especially in this environment, I would emphasize that. So yeah, no, I just wanted to find out what we decided so I could remember.
From Beaverton, the Community Development Director, we did hear again about Significant Natural Resources, that particularly for the urban growth boundary expansion areas, they were concerned with primarily tree cutting within those areas before the planning gets done and they annex. So they did ask us to look at enhancing our protections for those areas regardless of whether a land use approval is needed. And then also to adopt the Metro Title 13 maps for those areas. The board direction on March 10th, when we did have a work session on this, did look at having the metro map be what we adopt. And so that is the direction that we're going in. And then for tree protection outside of development review, there are some code provisions about that and we would intend to address that through the Significant Natural Resources Wilsonville reiterated their request regarding limiting contractors' establishments in the future development districts. If you remember, we did have that as a tier two item. And the concern was that changing any development allowances could be quite a contentious process and that wasn't considered to be a high priority at this time. So we would still recommend at this time that that stay on tier two. The CCI made, had a letter with five different requests. First, they asked for neighborhood meeting rules to change to require email notice for development applications where people attend the neighborhood meeting and give an email address that we provide notice to them when the development application goes through. Staff is recommending that that not be a CDC issue. The neighborhood meeting rules are carried out in different ways. And we actually are looking at the neighborhood meeting rules right now as they relate to holding online meetings and that sort of thing. So this could be something that we look at as we look at those rules.
I take it maybe what you're getting after is by putting it at that level rather than at the code level that as technology changes.
Correct.
Which can be very rapid at times, that we're not necessarily locked into having to then make changes in development code. We can make changes in implementing regulations would be smarter way to do it.
That's correct. Developing clear and objective standards for Significant Natural Resources and developing incentives, so that is something that's on the work program in Task S 1.2. An urban tree code for all areas. This is something that we talked about also a couple of weeks ago with the board when we talked about the Significant Natural Resources Assessment. And that at this point, we would be looking at tree protection regulations for Significant Natural Resource areas in particular. And should the board be interested in a tree code for areas beyond that, that probably would need to be a future work program discussion. Taking's issue paper as it relates to walkway gaps. This is an ongoing concern from the CCI about walkway gaps. And in the past, council has advised that we can't require dedication of right-of-way, particularly for lots of record. And this is what this request is aimed at. Staff doesn't believe an issue paper would provide additional information and council has advised that this is a legal issue best concerned, or best considered with council. And then finally, elevating governance issue paper to tier one, this is something that's on tier three and primarily because there's not funding or staff time at this point to do something like this. If it was a higher priority of the board, the board could direct us to search out funding and provide more time on this. So we would just need direction if that was board priority. There were various letters, including housing requests. There were a couple of letters in support of the Beaverton Safe Parking Request for Vehicle Camping, also for elevating what is now on a tier two placeholder, really, for homeless shelter and camping regulations to bring that up to tier one, looking at affordable and diverse housing options. And then there was a suggestion from the Racial Equity Collaborative for a tax on short-term rentals to help with supporting affordable housing. So we'll just note the Safe Parking Program and affordable housing options are included now in tier one in S 1.1 and 1.9. But the other topics, we would need board direction on if the board did want us to move those up. On Significant Natural Resources, we received comments supporting updating the Community Development Code now and addressing the clear and objective standards question, better protecting upland and wildlife habitat, doing more to protect trees, and developing protections for the UGB expansion areas. And I'll just note that the board did provide direction on March 10th for what the board wanted us to focus on this year, and most of these are included in that. With short-term rentals, there were two comments on the work program, but again, I think I mentioned 76 comments on the issue paper. So a lot of interest in this topic. Definitely wanting regulation to limit the impacts on neighborhoods. From the issue paper comments, 32% supported short-term rental regulations and 26% were just a variety of comments, not necessarily in support or opposed, but comments about what regulations might include. 16% wanted there not to be regulations and then 13% wanted us to prohibit them altogether. We did hear from Save Halvetia with concerns on short-term rentals in the rural area and that would be something that we would plan to review as we develop regulations.
Can I ask a quick question on that? Going back two slides, we talked about, sorry, I need to talk closer. On back a couple of slides, we talked about kind of putting on whole or at least board direction on tax on short-term rentals to support affordable housing. If we're going to be dealing with short-term rental requests as far as, I guess, restrictions and guidelines with that, couldn't we incorporate those two together and get two with one? Or are they two really totally separate issues?
Yeah, the tax issue is not really a land use issue, so it would need its own sort of, could be a parallel path, but a separate process, really.
And would that tax be considered like a TLT?
That's a really good question. I don't know the answer to that. I mean, we're already collecting, in theory, we should be collecting transient lodging tax from a short-term rental. So I think that request here would likely be some sort of an additional supplemental local tax, but we'd have to, yeah. So that would be a more complex conversation with council and finance and others.
Okay. Thank you.
Maybe as a follow-up to that, I'd like to see how things play out at the metro level before we spend a lot of time with our own local additional taxes with respect to affordable housing.
Then there were several requests regarding transportation. Most of them were probably more likely or better addressed through different processes. One was concerning transportation safety on Twelton Valley Highway and also on Kineman Road. And Twelton Valley Highway isn't a county facility, but we are convening the Twelton Valley TV Highway Corridor Plan, coordinating with all the partner jurisdictions and ODOT. And that will, that and other work that we're doing will inform funding decisions on both of those facilities. There was support for a northern connector concept.
Quick question on that. How will this new TV highway corridor plan effort compare and contrast to the one done sometime in the last 10 years?
So this is actually an effort that's happening right now and has been going on for most of this year. So we're working with metro staff, ODOT, TRIMET, looking at the entirety of the TV highway corridor.
My concern is that we just use different names.
Ah, yeah, okay. And so again, obviously.
That was called the TV Highway Corridor Plan.
That's right.
I think there's more than one.
So it's like whack-a-mole. Groundhog Day, that's what.
Yeah, this should probably say corridor planning as opposed to corridor plan. Yeah, and clearly that work is informing the possibility of projects that get funded through the Metro measure, assuming that that's successful later this year.
Yeah, recall the Good Intentions.
Right.
It was just the project name I was catching up with.
And the fact that we have done that work on TV Highway really helped in promoting that corridor.
So on the Northern Connector, that, we are doing coordination with Hillsborough and regional partners on the Highway 26 corridor study. And this concept is, will be considered as part of that. And then we had a comment about expansion of the bicycle and pedestrian trail network. And we do have a task, L 1.1 Trails Planning and Coordination. Then there was a very detailed comment about intersection geometry. That one will be forwarded to the county engineer. And then a request to add a bus line to Northwest 113th Avenue. And that responsibility lies primarily with TRIMET. The county does coordinate with TRIMET and we can pass along that comment as well. And then we did have the first and last mile study that identified opportunities for connecting people with transit, so that would apply there as well. There were a couple other more technical changes requested by a consultant and we felt that those probably could be considered in the omnibus ordinance. Not necessarily that staff has done an analysis and supports them at this point, but they could be considered through that. There was also a letter about rural issues related to road safety, driveways, and protection of wells. And that, it is a topic that's of much concern to a lot of rural residents. And we did a study in 2016, or 2017, an issue paper on rural roads at the urban edge. And there were some recommendations in there that will also be considered through the Complete Streets Design Update and the Urban Reserves Transportation Study. And then groundwater isn't something that long-range planning addresses, so that's really addressed by the water master. And finally, there were a couple bigger, broader questions or topics that were raised. I think these were both from the Racial Equity Collaborative. The first has to do with facilitating conversation and coordinated plans and action on climate change and resilience. And this is an important issue for the county. We don't have it at this point on our work program and that probably would warrant a work session with the Board if there was some interest in that.
Yeah, having a Board conversation about climate change was something that at one point, could have been in 2019. We put through the rolling agenda in the parking lot of, and then our 2020 plate was pretty full. So we were trying to stay focused on our key initiatives. And then the COVID-19 came, so we still have four key priorities to move forward on. So this just keeps getting bumped down the list. As long as we just keep it on the parking lot and see when we can come up for air after getting through the peak at least on COVID-19, our CAO hiring, our budget, and then business as usual, we'll be doing okay.
Great.
Besides that, just, just the general topic of action on climate change and resiliency, that's, that's like huge. So at some point in time, if we ever do get this in off the parking lot into the dock, we're going to need to significantly reduce the scope of that into much more specifics, I would guess, as to what really falls into our wheelhouse of capable things to do or to advocate for. So, yeah, this is, that's, that's a pretty broad topic. That's a couple of years' worth of work probably there, just in that.
Well, it, we did have some discussion last year on it where we were just getting a good organizational overview about what efforts we already have underway with regard to county operations, county transportation planning and so forth. So it's not like we're not doing, we're doing nothing. We are in fact doing a lot and handling the land use needs of the urban unincorporated areas and so forth. And because of the passage of time, we'll need to pick back up with that as you recall moment and then say, okay, now that we're, whatever year we'll be in, in the 2020s, are there any unmet needs that we, we want to take on as a county organization? Have that kind of open conversation before initiating some very purposeful programs.
Yeah. And jumping on board with legislative action like we did last year on the diesel fuel, those kinds of things. I could see us continuing to just track along with those. And at some point in time, absolutely have a conversation about, let's look at big picture stuff from the standpoint of our county responsibilities and all of that. But, yeah, I get it. And I completely, I completely agree with your comment about, it's not like we're doing nothing and we're sitting on our hands. We're, we're tracking as best we can and supporting where we can.
Yep. Thank you. And then finally, they asked for greater outreach and engagement with communities of color and immigrant groups throughout all of the work program. And we do our best on that as we, as we work on the work that we do. But we do expect that we'll get further direction and tools from the work of the new, the new staff to be hired in diversity, equity, inclusion. So now I guess would be the time for discussion about any things that we have talked about. Many of the comments, as I've noted, have been addressed in the current work program, but there are a couple that, that haven't been. And I think a couple of these the Board has already talked about. But if the, if you wanted us to do anything or change anything on these topics, now would be the time, I guess, to talk about that. So specifically, the exemption of TDT for affordable housing, Taking's issue paper, elevation of homeless shelter camping issues to Tier One, tax on short-term rentals, and climate change focus. I think actually, probably most of those, the Board has weighed in on already.
Because I haven't been very good at checking in with Commissioner Threes on the telephone. We're currently on Slide 19. Are there any questions that you have, Commissioner Threes, up to this point?
No, and I've been following right along, so don't worry. If I need to time in, I will. Thank you.
Great, great. Well, just to dive right in, I'll just go first. I think the, the work program that you have with Tier One and Tier Two has a lot appreciable in it already. So I'm not in a position of recommending that we add any of the additional items that are here on, on this slide. Other thoughts?
Yeah, the only one that really, I think, is looming is the elevation of the homeless shelter and camping. I, I think that's an issue that I would at least like to have more conversation and maybe a little bit more research done. And partly that would be to support the Sheriff's Department, because they are our front line for dealing with that issue. And I think, I think I'd just like to have a discussion on that. I'm not advocating that we move that to Tier One and add more to your plate at this point in time, but I'm saying that at some point in time, probably in the not-too-distant future, it's going to be forced onto your plate. So I'd kind of like to get ahead of that a little bit.
Yeah, and I, I think, I'm going to look to Aaron in the back of the room there. I think it was LC 29 has some language in it that very closely resembles House Bill 4001 from the short session around transitional housing. So I think there may be some, some movement happening on that at the state level. We'll see in another week or so what happens there. And then as I understood it, that's enabling language, not a, not mandatory. Yeah, so that, that may well prompt a discussion for us to come back at some point. And, and we'd clearly want to coordinate that with Annette in housing and the whole housing team as well.
Well, and we've got, maybe if there's any silver lining to this coronavirus and how we're trying to deal with providing housing for homeless in that situation, maybe some good things will come out of that, as things that we hadn't had the opportunity for. And then, as you know, we've got the, the Here Together Initiative for Homeless coming in May. That may be providing some funds available as well if that were to pass. So I think some, some of the opportunities are now starting to come a little bit more close into focus. And I think, yeah, like I said, we may be forced to, to upgrade that to a Tier One priority sometime soon.
We'll note that the Safe Parking, so addressing the Safe Parking Program is in Tier One at this point. And as we do that work, we could be looking at what else is going on and potentially bringing that forward if there are things that are rising to the surface at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
And I would note that Theresa didn't really mention it, but based on our projection of the volume of work anticipated with each of these topics, we're estimating that we're ever so slightly oversubscribed based on our staffing levels and the, and the Tier One work. So that's not unusual. We typically are pretty ambitious each year in terms of what we try to accomplish and I, our team does a great job. And I think that we'll continue to do that. And again, we, we learn things along the way. While it may not be the direct focus of our work, we're, we're learning things as we go that will be helpful later.
I'm, I'm fine with the, what we have with the Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three rankings at this point. My comments would be two.
I am as well.
Go ahead, go ahead Pam.
No, I am, I am as well, although I do agree with Commissioner Willie from the standpoint that I think our intent and need to be really up high on, on the homeless issues and, and how we address those. So thanks for bringing that up.
My, my two comments are, one, I agree with the list as well, but you know, something we've lost sight of in the last three years, it was a tool that I liked and maybe because I suggested it and we used it here for a while and now it's kind of gone. It was called, what I call the capacity report. You have those in every business where it tells you, you know, what, what can I do? And not just what I'd like to do, but what can I do? And when we use that, in fact, I'd use it in the last side of it too. I know Dan did when he was here. But it'd give us a list of what we wanted. And we could add anything we wanted, but you gave us a list of what you had available. And it's really hard for me, honestly, to give you any clear thoughts on what should be added or not, because I don't know what your capacity is. In the old days, we did. And so if I came in with this red-hot idea and say, fine, convince two others to bump something off the list. So it'd be really nice if we could see that.
Yeah.
Don't we have that in the spreadsheets you've given us?
Yeah, you'll see in the staff report that we actually have assigned FTEs to things, so we don't.
How much are your total FTEs and how, is that, you seem to be finding people to do certain things, so I guess I'm confused.
Right, we're usually, I think we're over-prescribed by maybe two FTE or 2.5, something like that. So usually how that plays out is things stay in Tier One, but a lot of times, things outside our control on schedule, either being reliant on another agency or thinking that a plan amendment's going to come in and it's, you know, a private sector thing that just doesn't happen. What usually happens is we get to all the Tier One things, but they may take, take longer than we thought initially. So, so you'll see that in the staff report.
No, and I agree, and the Chair pointed it out well, but it looks oversubscribed and it usually is. So we used to try to get closer to one-to-one, so we knew exactly.
Yeah, we're, we're really close. I think Andy said two and a half FTE. I think we're maybe 2% or 3% over, oversubscribed. So I think we'll, we'll be okay. And again, we, we sometimes accomplish everything on the list and sometimes we get, you know, 85 to 90%. So like I said, our, our team does a really good job of being aggressive at, at tackling the, the program that you adopt every year.
And the thought would be that if, if any of these, if the Board was interested in elevating any of these, that we probably would need to look at what might drop off. So we're, we kind of are at our capacity and it, this would be if something changed, then we would need to modify it.
Can I just have one quick follow-up? I didn't mean to insinuate, you guys aren't doing a great job, you are, but it didn't appear, at least as of late, the last few years, that the Board was driving what fell off. It was what was internally fell off. So that was the thrust of my point, where the Board would actually say, okay, if you're two over, three over, one over, let's decide what we're taking off versus staff saying, well, we didn't get to it because we just didn't have the capacity. So that was my thought. I'll stop.
Great, thank you. So the next steps are that next week, we'll be back with adoption or approval of the work program. And what, a part of what that does is also it authorizes us to file the ordinances that are listed on there. So that's what, what we will be moving forward with then. So thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments, Board members?
Nope, good report.
Okay, we have one remaining topic on the agenda for today. It's scheduled for a half an hour. Looking at the clock, we've been sitting here for a couple of hours now. Do you want to take a 15-minute break? I heard one, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so Commissioner Threes, we're going to break for 15 minutes, so we'll be back at 3:20.
Great, thank you. I'll break as well.
Okay, great.[1594.33]
Yes, I'm here.
We're just waiting for Commissioner Willie and Commissioner Rogers to join us back in the room.
I just want to point out, I'm still on time always.
Yes, we all noticed that. And, but it's still pretty alcohol smelling. The other thing I've learned is it removes the varnish, the finish off of the furniture back there. So Kathy helped get some towels on that, yeah. We'll have to let facilities know that our efforts at COVID sanitation has.
Are ruining the furniture.
Yes. Okay, so Commissioner Rogers is back in the room, so why don't we just get going, Ellen, with what you were going to highlight for us?
All right, well, thank you, Madam Chair. So this weekend, Sunday, we was talking to Sia and Steve, and we were concerned about the emergency contract provisions and that there is no upper limit on any of those emergency contracts under the emergency purchasing rules, which is in the email I just sent out to you. There is any contract in excess of $150,000 the CEO can agree to and just has to notify the board. And we thought it'd be good to have a specific dollar limit so he knows exactly what his authority is. And so we, on Monday, we amended the emergency declaration to add this sentence, that the county administrative officers delegate authority to authorize contracts under this emergency declaration in amounts of up to $500,000, and will follow the emergency procedures and the rules of procurement. So we added that section at the last minute, and I should have let you know yesterday, but said it was a fast-moving thing, and we just wanted to sort of put a dollar limit, and so Steve knew exactly how much money he spent. So that's on the agenda tonight for you to vote on. And so that's going to be, extends the declaration for two weeks, but as the chair pointed out, on the 14th, we do not have an actual official board meeting, so we'll likely come back on next Tuesday and do a 14-day declaration that'll extend it for just two weeks. And then, I think in early May, it's on your rolling calendar that I've, we're proposing a emergency ordinance to amend our ordinance to allow these declarations to go for 30 days. So you'll be seeing that coming up in the near future.
So if possible, I just downloaded the packet another time. Could you also highlight that additional language in the emergency declaration at tonight's meeting?
Sure, sure, I'll definitely mention that at the start of the section on that.
Great, terrific.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ellen. All righty, now we're going to turn it over to our Clean Water Services team. Mr. Jockers, will you be making any introductory comments, or do we dive right in with our presentation?
No, just dive right in with Bob and Joy here. That would be great.
Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. For the record, my name is Bob Baumgartner. I am the Regulatory Affairs Director. With me is Joy Ramirez of the Environmental Services Supervisor. What I wanted to do, if it's okay with you, ma'am, is just take a minute to deviate from our planned presentation. I was going to show off and wipe down the table with our wipes, but I overheard somebody say it took the finish off, and I didn't want to get blamed for that, so I elected not to show off. But when I first got here, you were talking about COVID issues, and I am very glad to hear you're taking those very seriously. As part of what we are doing at our laboratory is providing a service for all of the district, and part of that service is to create our own wipes and our own hand sanitizer, which I saw you using some stuff that is not nearly as good as what we produce. So I wanted to be able to provide you.
A bottle? You could drink it? I would not suggest you might have to buy. I wondered what's happening.
Ingestion is not recommended.
Ingestion is not good. It is not safe to drink. It does, it's got 75% isopropyl alcohol, so don't get it near an open flame.
We only need to apply a few drops.
Yes, it is very.
So we need to make sure that we have a container so that we can get it to Commissioner Teresa.
Thank you, Chair. I was just going to ask Mr. Baumgartner, don't forget me.
Oh, I wouldn't forget you. You're the first thing on my mind. We do have a bottle for you, Commissioner Teresa. I would not recommend diluting it, I would just use a few drops. It should be very effective. We have made a, our first batch that we have then distributed across the district. It is being quite extensively used. We're in our second batch. The first batch cost us about $3.59 a bottle to make, but there's a lot of lead costs. By the time we're done with our next batches, it'll probably be on the order of a dollar, a dollar twenty that'll cost us to make these, yes. And so with that, I just wanted to let you know at least one aspect of how we are taking our social distancing and cleanliness plans are seriously at the district. And with that, I will turn it over to Joy.
Thank you very much for having us today. I wanted to kind of give you an update on where we're at. So last time we were, we came to the board within January, and we gave you the pre-treatment 101, I guess, background of the Environmental Services Program. And today, I would like to update you on where we're at for our next steps. So just to remind you, the Environmental Services Program with Clean Water Services, we have, we do environmental response, cost recover, cost recovery, and we do our pre-treatment program. Our goals are always to maintain worker safety, environmental protection, plant infrastructure, and also infrastructure, the POTW, and also compliance and enforcement. We're here today to talk about our pre-treatment ordinance. And so our pre-treatment program, we have, as we shared with you before, we have our federal program, which is mandatory, which is for specific industries, and we do permitting, monitoring, and enforcement, and we also have to have the legal authority from the 40 CFR 403. In addition to that, we also have our local program. And under our local program, we do, again, cost recovery, industries that aren't mandated under the federal program, and industries that we see that are potentially growing to a certain threshold, usually the volume of their discharge, and we want to keep an eye on them. So today, we are here to talk about why we need to update. So today, we are here to talk about why we need to update the ordinance. And the ordinance that we are talking about is ordinance 09-1 and a part of ordinance 27. And so currently, there are, the ordinance is distributed in several ordinances, there's not very much clarity, the ordinance has, are extremely outdated, the treatment plants are highly advanced and have changed over the years, our limits through our new NP, or reissued NPDS permit in 2016, water quality restraints are getting more and more restrictive, and also we have a lot of non-traditional users that discharge into our system that aren't under the federal program. This is also in response to previous regulatory agency audits. Our last audit was in 2011, and we are currently going to be getting another audit here in a couple of weeks.
Who's auditing you?
So DEQ got a grant, and so they're actually going to be using the EPA's consultants, auditors, to audit our program.
Okay.
So the goal for updating this pre-treatment ordinance is to organize into one location to provide the transparency. And that transparency is not only for our customers, the individuals that we, or the industries that we regulate, but also for our regulators, so they know what rules, where they're looking, and how we can make sure we're being consistent with our permit and our enforcement, also for clarifying procedures, and to respond from previous audits that said we were kind of out of date, we haven't really moved our ordinance up to date. And so kind of where we're at right now is we gave you the brief, the board briefing back into, or in January, and then we met with SEWAC in March. And now we're here today to ask that we want to move forward, we have started a draft of this new non-domestic waste ordinance, and to review that and to ask SEWAC for the public input so we can start moving forward, and then have that also get a regulatory, I guess, overview with partnership with DEQ before it actually gets submitted, to make sure that we're in line with what the federal regulatory requirements are for our ordinance also. So that is what we're here today to discuss and to see if we can move forward with the draft of the local, of the pre-treatment ordinance that we put together.
Just for clarification, so what you're, what the process that you're talking about in your timeline here is addressing the issues on the slide that you had, why update the ordinance, so clean that up, is that, is that I'm understanding what you're asking?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And what we're really looking at today in a lot of ways to bring you up to speed on what we need to do there, and also to go ahead and charge SEWAC with managing kind of the public process on this. We briefed them at the last meeting earlier this month. We're not going to be meeting in April, and I'll be curious if we meet in May for that matter, but to try to bring them into, up to speed on how we should start putting this ordinance together to ensure that we have that transparency and consistency that Joy has talked about.
Thanks for speaking up. I just realized, once you said something, that for about, not quite a year and a half, I've looked left, and now in this room setup, I have to look right. Got my attention, thanks.
So really, that's it. Our request today is to direct us to work with the SEWAC to initiate the public input process. We expect to work with SEWAC, we expect to do a lot of outreach to the industrial sources as well as NGOs and nongovernmental organizations. Much of that, I think we can start with, right now, with kind of the one-on-one virtual meetings, and we will follow Mark's lead as we begin to work with SEWAC.
From my standpoint, sounds, sounds like a fine idea. The one thing that really makes me comfortable with it is that we have the track record of SEWAC doing a lot of option analysis and recommendation review in the past, and that's a good track record. But also because of the work that I've seen you do in preparing information packets for SEWAC, making those publicly available, providing visibility on the Clean Water Services Facebook page, as well as through interested party emails, really speak to the openness and transparency of doing this work. So I think having SEWAC go through the examination of the ordinance and reviewing that prior to it coming to us is, is like having the planning commission review things on the land use side.
So my only question would be, did you prepare this schedule before or after this coronavirus?
We actually prepared this before. This is something we've been working on well over a year, going through our core documents as we had shared with you before, and we had looked, we as Environmental Services have been looking at our overall, all of the documents that touch our program, and so we have been making progress on each one of those documents, and this was not rushed, but this is also something we don't want to delay, and between going virtual and using that, I think it'll still cover the public input and help us make progress.
Yeah, because I was just noticing it's a fairly abbreviated timeline, actually, for what appears to be a complex project, so again, just from my outside looking in, but so you don't have any problems with the timelines, and you think you can meet those even though we are obviously no longer meeting together?
We understand that because of the current conditions, it might change a little bit, we might have to slide this depending on the interaction and the input that we have, and just techn, it's a little bit more difficult if we have to make some of those changes or if we need to come back, but we definitely, we do feel comfortable with this timeline as we sit currently.
Okay, I'm okay with this.
Just one question I have, you, we don't have any, we don't have any mandated legal dates that we might be bumping up against if we go a month or two out beyond December of 2020?
The only legal mandate, excuse me, Madam Chairman, members of the commission, the only legal driver that we have is we would prefer to have this go in as part of our package that we are submitting to DEQ for our permit renewal, which goes into December. It's very unlikely that DEQ will act on that permit and take it out to the public process within a very short timeframe, so we can always insert it until such time as the DEQ takes the whole package out for public comment. And if we fail to meet that, we can always go through an independent public process to update the permit. So there's no real failsafe kind of end product or driver, but we would prefer to do it as a package, so people see the entire package of our NPDS program and can comment on the entire package of our NPDS program.
Thank you, yeah.
Commissioner Trees, do you have any questions or thoughts on the request to take this to SEWAC?
I support it, thank you.
So it's, it sounds like Commissioner Rogers? No, it sounds like.
There you go.
Onward ho you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any last items before we close today's work session?
And one, one last thing, we are reusing these to be environmentally sensitive, so when you're done, put your name on it, send it back, and we'll get you another bottle.
Great, thank you. All right, that's it for today's work session.
Could I, could I ask, what time, what time may I dial in tonight, and is it the same number?
Chuck says it's the same telephone number, and I assume he'll be prepared at 15 minutes before the meeting, so 6:15, and he's shaking his head yes.
Perfect, thank you so much, and thank you for, everybody for making sure that you're speaking up, I really do appreciate it.
No worries. And I'll, I'll get you a bottle of sanitizer and drop it off at your house.
Okay, thanks, Catherine, bye.
Bye-bye.